Paco, Paco, Officer Paco.
Every time I try to talk to him, he takes out his baton and just stares at me.
Yeah, I believe you, absolutely.
Yeah, I don't, I get bad, some bad juju vibes from him. Kind of reminds me of a meter William White.
Oh.
Is he?
I don't know.
I haven't seen him in a while.
What the hell is that?
What's what?
What the hell is D'Angelo doing to himself?
Who's D'Angelo?
Becoming a dad?
He had my headband on.
Yes, he, you know.
Uh, Councilmember Sicard.
King for the people.
Councilman Caputo.
Did, uh, did Doctor?
Counselor Pat, train my council?
Alright, now if we could, just, uh, please get everybody to rise. We can, uh, turn the flag and do our pledge of allegiance.
Oh, sorry, Bob.
How dare you, how dare you.
And.
Alwin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United.
Of the United States of America.
Santos?
And for the Republic, which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible. For liberty and justice for all. Amen.
For one? Us, all of us.
All for one, one for all, all for one.
For everyone.
For everyone except for Boblin.
Thumbs up for America.
No, we're getting it, we're getting it.
Are you civilians?
No.
Okay, uh, last meeting was, uh, very short, um.
Well, I'm here this time.
Yeah, and, uh, yeah, I know there were a couple of council members who, uh, were a little worried of the weather, I'm glad to see, uh, Councilman Williams back. Um, really, uh, as far as official business, um, I was a little ill last week also, is there anything pressing that, uh, we tabled that needed to be brought back up this week?
I don't believe, don't believe so.
I don't know.
Are you even facial?
Nothing, my partner and I was in the dust.
But I guess, I guess we can start with, uh, new proposals that from our council members, uh, starting with my right, Councilman, uh, Royland, uh, Sicard, would you like to start?
Uh, I don't know why I need to stand up here, um, I would like, I am putting before the legislature, uh, before the council, um, the bill, um, Judicial Authorization Requirement Act, uh, Requirement Act for Warrants of nineteen eighty-five. Um, but the purpose of this, uh, bill, uh, the purpose of this act is to enhance protection of individual rights and privacy by ensuring that all warrants are subject to judicial oversight.
You guys are a little quiet, is it just?
Uh, bill will do, require that all warrants be signed off, um, by a judge, um, and then there are an extension circumstances to allow a prosecutor to sign off. But this is to ensure that, you know, due processes add and that individual.
Yeah, it's a distance thing.
Uh, council members, could you shout, it's a little bit hard to hear you back.
Yeah.
Yeah, did no one hear me?
Uh, I didn't hear you from here.
I'm shouting, let me, uh, here, I'll just get up and talk here so that people can hear, cause now we're having issues in this building. Alright, um, I am putting forward the Judicial Authorization Requirement Act for Warrant of nineteen eighty-five. Essentially what this will do, um, the purpose of this act is to enhance the protection of individual rights and privacy by ensuring that all warrants are subject to judicial oversight. In non-legal terms, what this will do is require that all warrants, um, are signed off by a judge, um, allowing some exigent circumstances for a prosecutor. Ensuring that, uh, their rights are protected and that warrants are, um, have an independent oversight, um, by, uh, a judge or a prosecutor in certain circumstances.
Any questions, uh, for, uh, Councilman Sicard from the council? Councilman King?
Councilmember King?
So, I know that it says that there will always be a judge available all the time, always, most of the time. But what if there is some situation where there is an important warrant? That one hundred percent needs to be executed in a timely manner? And a judge is not available to write off on it at that time? And should the warrant not be able to be executed in a timely fashion? It could potentially lead to a loss of whatever it is that the warrant was about or harm civilians? What, what if?
Yeah, that's so, yeah, that would be the exigent circumstances cited under, uh, section four, okay? Notwithstanding section three of this act, there are exigent circumstances that make it impractical to him change the authorization before the execution of the warrant. Law enforcement needs to have authorization from a prosecutor, provided that an application for judicial authorization is made within a reasonable time after. There's also a clause which allows for security issues. Uh, section B, um, in cases involving matters of state, uh, security, a warrant may be, uh, issued by a prosecutor subject to subsequent review by a, uh, judge within reasonable time.
Can it be any prosecutor?
Anyone, yeah, anyone that is, has the title of prosecutor, correct.
Okay, no further questions.
Um, I'm curious as to the intention of this, cause this, this is already the case.
It's not, currently, um, uh, warrants of arrest are able to be signed off by command members of, of, of the LSPD. But we, this would, uh, take it out of the hands of the command members and put it in an independent, uh, judicial review.
The rule we just added, that arrest warrants need to be signed by.
Essentially, yeah, it, it's, you're kidding that arrest warrants are treated the same as everything else? Uh, to ensure that, you know, uh, again, to enhance protection of individual rights and privacy.
Yes, hello, I know you haven't called for people to speak, but I am a member of High Command inside the LSPD, Captain Thomas D'Angelo. Uh, what this man is in trying to enact is, uh, complete other horseshit and it's already been enacted once and then revoked. Uh, because the, uh, the judges and, uh, the, the, uh, I guess DA's office at the time, uh, saw no need for it. Uh, that is my input.
Thank you, Tommy.
I will retort that by saying that as a, uh, defense attorney, I have, uh, numerous times have been presented with warrants that did not meet the, uh, probable cause status. Or, or were the charges that could ever be substantiated in court, should have never, would never would have been signed off.
Well then, Mr. Sicard, I recommend that you en- enact your, uh, your, your, you know, client, uh, I guess rights to, uh, plead not guilty to charges and appeal them in the court of law.
I, I'm enacting my rights right now as a council member to, um.
And were you going to bring forth this bill without, uh, talking to any of PD Command whatsoever?
It's not, it, my duty is to represent the will of the people, the will of the people have asked for this to happen.
I see, and who is, who, who represents the will of the people, is there some sort of vote that, uh, occurred on this?
I, is, I go out and talk to the people, I have heard from many people, this is a issue that they have, um, I have spoken to other members in deep, in great length. They have supported the, um, changing of this so that there is judicial oversight, we have.
There already is judicial oversight on search warrants. And, 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 and try and enact laws that govern what the police department can do?
Yes.
The city council can enact laws that the, the police department has to follow.
Yes, that's true.
That, that is true, actually, yes.
Jesus fucking Christ. Well, I hope that doesn't, or else you might have about fifty officers that might just quit.
Oh darn. Oh wow.
Good luck having a police department.
Judicial oversight is such an issue that your officers would quit?
Hold on a second.
Sort of question with this.
Before you speak, uh, we're gonna finish questions from the, uh, council before we allow anybody else to speak in this, on the, not in the audience. Are there any other questions among the council members?
No.
Going back to it, I mean, uh, officers arrest individuals based on probable cause, um, creating an arrest warrant based around that same probable cause, I mean, I'll be assuming that all officers are arresting people without probable cause?
Well, I'm saying that warrants, uh, need, that if they want to issue a warrant for someone's arrest, uh, that it needs to be reviewed by a, a judge. Uh, there's a simple, uh, warrant is something that needs to be reviewed by independent third party, um, a, a judge. Who can look at it and oversee to make sure that, um, probable cause is established and that, um, an independent third party is having the ability to look at it.
Uh, hey, Royland.
Best council member, um, winters?
Alright, so, I'm, I'm new to this, alright, so talk to me like I'm, like I'm a moron. So currently, how are, how are, how are arrest warrants currently executed within this city?
Currently, arrest warrants are, uh, not subject to judicial, signed by a judge, they are able to be signed by any high command member of, uh, the LSPD.
Right.
A judge is not required by LSPD command members, High Command gave that.
Which was agreed upon by the, uh, entire state entity.
Who's, who's the state entity?
Uh, all judges, the AG's office, uh, and PD High Command.
Who was the AG at the time?
AG's office?
What's that?
Who, who was the AG at the time?
I believe, yeah, I believe Caputo was, was the acting AG at the time. I had already stepped down, so whoever took over after me.
Not sure if it was myself or Matthew Martin, but, uh.
Uh, might have been Martin, might have been Martin.
Martin was, Martin was AG for five hours, so, you know.
Still AG.
In, in my opinion, based upon how other states do it, a warrant should be issued by a magisterial district judge. And then be executed by a police officer, I mean, that's just, that's just.
That's what happens in the case of search warrants, Mr. Winters. All search warrants are required by, uh, by law to be seen by judicial, not, not, not every state.
Name of state doesn't do it.
Uh, I'd have to look, but I can tell you right now, not every state in America does that.
Any other questions among the council members? Yeah, we're gonna open it up to questions with the audience, uh, when you come up, please line up at the podium. State your name and please make sure you're speaking loudly and, uh, make sure that this is on this topic. So go ahead, sir.
Uh, yeah, my name's Mickey O'Shea, I'm a, uh, PO three corporal with the LSPD, um, so, with respect to arrest warrants, um, I guess it should be reminded that this is a warrant to arrest, not charge. Um, simply arresting somebody does not mean they've been charged with anything, it means that we've, as officers, established probable cause. And based on that probable cause, we're arresting somebody, it's no different to arresting somebody with probable cause on the street. It's simply a person that we've been unable to detain and arrest on the spot, but we have evidence to conduct that arrest, um. Not all warrants are, uh, serious, you know, I don't know, first degree murder cases, you could have, uh, a, a warrant based on fingerprint casings matching a criminal fingerprints found at the scene of a store robbery. You put out a warrant because they weren't there when you arrived, but they've shot the clerk dead, uh, they've taken the money, they've emptied the safe, but you've got enough evidence to be able to arrest them. Um, is this not putting a existential workload on judges and just bogging down judicial system with, I mean, literally hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of warrants? It seems a little bit, it seems like a bit of a bottleneck, um, and I'm just wondering why it was changed originally if, uh, you know, it was that way before and then it got changed to what it is now.
Uh, Corporal O'Shea, can I ask you, like, uh, cause I am also, this is out of my, uh, area of expertise, like, you said hundreds and hundreds of, of these sorts of things, like, how many arrest warrants are issued daily on average or even a week on average?
I couldn't say on average, but.
Can you give me a ballpark? Cause you just said hundreds and hundreds, so.
No, I'm just saying, like, a hundred, you know, going back hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of warrants, um, have been.
Weekly, just give me something, give me, give me something I can work with here, some of the, like paperwork that I can wrap my brain around.
I don't know, tell me, what would you say?
Uh, probably twenty to thirty just solo, solely arrest warrants a week and not including all the, uh, uh, yeah, somewhere around there, maybe more.
Maybe more, so thirty plus is what you're saying.
I can tell you in the last twenty-four hours, I think five have been written alone.
Okay.
How often are, are, are warrants for arrests being issued without intent to charge somebody with something, like, you, you need a, you, you need a reason?
Well, no, I would say never, but I, I would say never, but the distinction is, when you arrest somebody, does not mean that they've been charged with a crime. It means that you've established enough evidence to be able to arrest that individual, um.
For a crime?
For a crime, of course, in, yeah. But I mean, there's, there's, you know, there, there, there's a burden of proof, right, there's three stages, reasonable suspicion is I think you've committed a crime. Probable cause is I can prove you've committed a crime and beyond reasonable doubt is for the cause.
No, beyond a reasonable doubt is for a trial court to decide.
Yeah, but it's not for the police officer, which is the level that we're discussing here.
But if you don't have a reasonable doubt that an actual crime has been committed that should be charged, then you shouldn't be making an arrest.
That's what probable cause is, probable cause is, there is articulate evidence that we can prove that a, that a crime has been committed. Is about to be committed or has been committed.
Right.
Alright, and all this does is establish that that probable cause is reviewed by a, by a judge.
But then is that not saying that all officers that arrest people without warrants are arresting people without probable cause?
No, because there's exigent circum- circumstances, situations that have been witnessed by a police officer. There's a number of other factors under, under the federal rules of criminal procedure that allow for an officer to make an arrest without a warrant.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is if we find fingerprints matching, you know, whoever, and it's at the. And it's at, yeah, but the, the point is, it slows down the process.
Checks and balances, officer.
Right.
I'm just curious why, why appeals don't happen anymore? Do, do no lawyers think they can win appeals at all, is that the case? Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I don't hear about any of this shit anymore, like, uh, there used to be appeals daily. Well, that, that's their problem, what, we, we establish probable cause on a daily fucking basis, we, like you said, we have to, in command and above, have to approve these things.
It just seems like a, uh, an unnecessary obstacle.
And again, I already said this, this was already enacted by a, a, where, had, after I'd already left the, the AG's office, I can't even remember her, her name. Uh, Caputo, you remember the blonde chick that was in the AG's office for a while? Hell was her name? Uh, Alice, Alice something? Yeah, yeah, she enacted it and, uh, and got it basically approved with old PD High Command, no one that's currently in command, uh, was a part of this. And, uh, had, had it where judges, you know, would sign off on arrest warrants. That lasted, I don't know, two or three weeks and then the judges were like, this doesn't really even need to be a thing, so they gave it back to PD to handle.
Out of curiosity, how long ago did that happen?
Um, two, three, yeah, three months maybe? I'd say three months, three, yeah, three and a half, four months, maybe, around there.
A lot can change in four months.
I guess, but, uh, I don't know, the judges that are, uh, that are sitting still are, uh, are still the ones that were there back, way back in the day, so.
The, uh, deep justice is highly active in this state and available by fax near nearly all hours.
All I'm saying is this was already done and, uh, they didn't see a need for it anymore and it got reverted back, I mean, prior to it, to it, uh, at all is, arrest warrants weren't even signed off by police officers. Uh, by command, I'm sorry, uh, and they were just, you know, kind of, you know, okay, write up a warrant if you think you have probable cause. Now we have the, the kind of two-step program, if you will, where it has to be signed off by a member of command and above, which is a sergeant position and above.
And are all your sergeants bar-certified attorneys?
No, what, what does that have to do with anything?
It provides an additional oversight for understanding the law and have taken the bar.
I, I mean, I think someone that's a sergeant in the LSPD would understand the law enough to establish probable cause on a, any given case, Mr. Sicard.
They don't have it, but they're not independent.
Okay, alright, if you, that's the right, you wanna go, that's, that's your argument.
Yeah. And, uh, gentlemen at the podium, please announce your name and, uh, please speak loudly, loudly.
O- Oswin McHale, I'd just like to touch up on the, uh, subject. Uh, gentleman in the green brought up, um, the city, you know, life changes. Things can go backward and forward at any point in time. You know, if they had a need for it at one point and then no longer had a need for it, to an extent that could prove that it worked. And, and you know, maybe we just need it again. And perhaps in a couple of months, we won't need it, uh, you know, life changes.
Step forward, sir, please introduce your name and please make sure you're speaking loudly.
Yes, hello, my name is Rajesh Gupta, I'm a fairly new attorney to this state, so I'm, but I would like to give my, my opinion on, on this matter. Um, first of all, I would, I would definitely like to say that, uh, pretty much apart from this state, every single state, uh, a warrant of any sort is signed by a judge. Um, and that again is to just add the judicial review to make sure a neutral magistrate is reviewing, uh, you know, any warrant, be it search, arrest, whatever, seizure even. Um, and I think it's very important that it be that way, I understand the argument, uh, I don't agree with it, but I definitely understand, um, the argument that police arrest people on probable cause without a warrant, so they shouldn't need to get a judge to approve it with a warrant, but unfortunately, other than how it is currently, um, here, nowhere else has ever done that in my experience, um, nor, you know, in the forty-nine or other fifty states. Um, furthermore, it's, it, it is different to arrest someone, uh, without a warrant and with a warrant inherently for a couple of reasons. Um, you know, first of all, the positive ID you have when you arrest someone right in front of you is obviously there, because you've seen them do it, you've arrested them, blah, blah, blah. When people get away, um, you know, whatever evidence you believe you might have enough as an officer, may not truly be enough, um, for positive identification, even if you believe you have probable cause and positive identification. Um, and a judge who is obviously a very experienced bar-certified attorney who's worked their way up to the bench, may, uh, you know, very well disagree with it. And hence, you know, their experience and knowledge is the reason they're there, um, which is, you know, they, then they would deny it and save a person from getting their rights breached. By, uh, you know, getting arrested without the prob, the, an arrest warrant signed by a judge, I know currently that's allowed, but it shouldn't really be, regardless, um. Yes, that's my opinion, furthermore, uh, one last point, I don't wanna, don't wanna ramble, I'm an attorney, so I like hearing myself speak, but, uh, one last point. Um, again, I, I appreciate the argument that the police under, uh, should know what probable cause is, but, um, it's, you're, you're not, uh, and I'm not saying you as in personally you, I'm saying you as in the police, the police, uh, are not substitutes for, you know, don't have the knowledge and experience that are necessarily expected of a bar-certified attorney or especially a judge. And they shouldn't be able to, uh, you know, make the same determinations that a judge is expected to make and that the, the law requires a judge to make generally, again, at the moment it doesn't, but generally. Um, and so it, you know, it, it, it would just be silly to have, in my opinion, it is silly to have someone who's inherently not unbiased because their law enforcement be able to sign arrest warrants who buy themselves without even being any sort of legal certification in their experience. Um, and yes, I apologize for rambling, but that is my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Logic, very well articulated.
I appreciate that.
Robert Banner, Deputy Director of Public Defense. Um, I would like to ask, uh, for a bit of clarification, you did also state in the, this, um, bill that you're putting forward that if the judges are unavailable and for expedien- expediency, that they could use the, any, um, prosecutors, correct?
That is, we covered exigent circumstances.
Okay, and then, um, Ca- um, AG Caputo, also Councilman Caputo, uh, the AG is able to deputize people within the PD to handle prosecutorial duties, correct?
Um, I mean, we're gonna cite the special prosecutor in certain cases.
Mm-hmm, mm, so, th- there would be a way where certain people within the PD, if needed, could be used as, you know, backup sources for these warrants for expediency, correct?
Potentially.
Okay, so I don't see what the problem with this bill would be. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banner. Um, either, uh, uh, Councilman Sicard or, or Mr. D'Angelo, um, you both mentioned, or Mr. D'Angelo or, or Mr. O'Shea, uh, Officer O'Shea mentioned that, uh, hundreds and hundreds of warrants have been issued. Um, do either one of you, either Sicard or D'Angelo, do you know, um, what the conviction rate off of those warrants are?
God, I mean, it's up there, it's extremely high, I can tell you that, like in the ninety to, probably ninety-five and above a percentile.
How much of, of those that went to trial, what is the conviction rate?
It's still in probably ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent. At least in my time, in my time in the state, um, which is, I, I've been here since April. There's been, I think, that have gone to trial, I believe like five maybe cases that, uh, criminal, criminal, not, nothing civil or anything like that, that have, uh, have been ruled in the, the defense, uh, defense's favor.
I'm gonna, uh, these are the councils, I'm gonna put a motion to table this, um, for, I, I, I think that there maybe needs to be discussion with, uh, High Command along with, um, uh, Councilman Sicard and maybe even the mayor, uh, to kind of see, and the Attorney General's Office, of course, that's to see if this is.
Yeah, definitely the judges.
Yeah, um, I, I think that we probably wanna have a little bit further discussion on this, uh, I don't feel ready to vote on this, um, so, yeah, I would, I would motion to the table.
Second.
You're being very quiet, Billy.
I agree with that, I think we need to get this in front of some judges.
Okay, uh, uh, vote on the motion to table the, uh, the discussion so we can get, uh, together with, uh, the people needed to be to make this discussion.
Yes, sir.
Aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five.
Aye.
Six, Doctor Cat?
Yes, I, I agree, n- no, I think we could discuss it.
Okay, this unanimous it's carried, that, uh, this discussion will be tabled. And I'd like to take this opportunity to turn this over to the mayor.
Appreciate you, Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Hey, no problem, buddy.
Thanks, Robert.
Alright, continuing on, um, any more pieces of legislation after the motion table?
Uh, well, then we just went through, um, anything else from Mr. Sicard, you got anything else?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Uh, I presented all of my, uh, bills to the council.
Alright.
I ain't got nothing.
Alright.
Billy.
Alright. So, um. I, I don't have a bill, however, I'm, I am. Going to begin socializing the, the idea of. A, of a flight. Of an, of an agency that, that regulates flight. Um, a very lightweight agency, basically, that, that just kind of enforces the rules, it'll be. It would be. Under the Attorney General's Office or under the mayor, that, this is something to be discussed. Um. The. The goal being that for, you know, for the licensed pilots or, or for those as part of the pilot training program. Um, you know, that there are, you know, rules to follow that, that are. Stronger enforced than those that, 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 just like the flight school would set. Um. You know, so, as some of you may know, and, and, you know. This is not an advertisement. Uh, you know, the flight school is now in the city, uh, it is not taking. Uh, students at the moment yet, at, you know, waiting for things to get set up. Or, you know, may, waiting to establish all the rules and regulations first. But, the, so, you know, I just wanna kind of set it out there that. Um, you know, that we are going to be establishing these rules and, you know, and, and. Discussing who will be the, the, you know, the enforcement, who will be enforcing it. Um, you know, there also, there's also intent to speak with the. Um, you know, with the Police Department, with High Command, I've, you know, been trying to get a, a meeting with them. Um, or a. Sort of air traffic control communication channel. Um. Yeah, so I, I, um, I wanted to put this out there and open up for comment, both from my fellow counselors and from. The, from citizens to, to hear their commentary, uh, suggestions. Um, because, you know, we are going to be. Creating all these laws and before, you know. Well before the school opens, because, you know, I wanna make sure that things are done properly and, and safe.
Alright, well with that, let's open it up to, uh, the people first and then we'll go over the councils next. So any questions from the people about the flight school and the proposed, for lack of a better term, the FAA, the organizing body that will oversee the flight of the city? Any citizens have any questions? No, alright, can I move this to the council for questioning?
Or, or comments?
Much, uh, in total, what cost an in- an individual citizen to obtain their flight license, their, uh, license to fly?
So, right now, we're really just talking about the establishment of the rules. Um, the, the cost to es- es- establish a license is, uh, has not been finalized yet and, and that's more kind of at. Uh, at, at the school's discretion. Again, I don't want this to be about the school itself because I, I don't want it to be an advertisement. You know, for it, I, you know, I wanna talk about establishing the flight rules for the city.
Okay, oh, things like restricted areas, um. No-go zone, things like that.
Right. Do you have a map that I've drawn up? Uh, that creates, uh, you know, Fort Zicuto. And, uh, Bowling Brook. And the power station, the government facilities and the humane labs as no-go zone. And then flags the city of Los Santos from. The Vine Wood Sign South. Um. As well as the population center in, uh, Sandy Shores, Chumash. And Toledo. Um, as, uh, like a yellow zone. Uh, w- you know, with the, the restricted ones being red zones. Yellow zones would on, um, only fully licensed pilots would be able to. Fly over. Um, you know, those who have completed the, you know, their certification. Um. The, and, and then the, you know, the outer zones would be, you know, the ones, you know, basically areas where it's safe to. For somebody who's not a fully licensed pilot to, to learn how to fly.
What safeguards do you propose putting in, uh, when a, um, pilot violates these airspace, those are, it is operating outside. Uh, the correct, the proper authorization of their, um, operation, I should say, of their, um, aircraft?
Well, could, would you, would you mind speaking up just a little bit?
Sorry, um. What, uh, have you discussed any rules for conduct and how it's supposed, how they're supposed to operate the vehicle as well as, um. Essential like punishments or something that would happen if someone is operating in an area that they're not supposed to or operating their aircraft in a way that would deem, um, unsafe?
So we will need to pass a criminal statute with a, um, with a penalty for flying in restrict- restricted airspace. Um. We. The. It's, we are limited in that it's, it would be, it's extremely difficult to get a radio in the helicopter. Um, the government has currently stated that it doesn't seem possible given current technological. Uh, capabilities. Obviously, if there's a radio, it's easier to establish communications, you know, somebody to, you know, warn somebody, hey, you know, get out of this, this airspace. The. The. Pilots. When they're trained, it will be ingrained in them that absolutely no malfeasance is to occur. Because the federal government has made it very clear that they will shut down the whole flight school. If. Any funny business was to occur.
Uh, of course. Sorry, sorry to interrupt you, it kind of leads to a question that I have, and I know I've raised this a little bit before, but in the council, we get involved in it. Um, the idea of background checks and, um. And complacency checks for pilots and students. Have you thought about that?
Well, yes, so from a, like, um, you know, compliance and certification standpoint, you know, the, the school will establish a standard. Um, and the. Governing body, whoever that is, um, will. You know, will ask them to sign off on, you know, on, on it. I mean, it'll be subject to change a little bit, but the, the, we'll ask them to, to. Just put additional eyeballs on it and, and certify that it's, that they're comfortable that, that it's enough for the state. Um, from a background check perspective. I think. I think that that is something that is for. Either the council to vote on. Or, um, you know, whether background checks are necessary for a pilot. Or. It's. Up to the discretion of the flight school. Uh, in which case it would be on a discretionary basis. I. Would want to have this discussion along with the judiciary to ask them to weigh in.
I see. Have you thought about the relationship between the FAA, lack of a better term. And the proposed possibilities of a Department of Transportation considering we have a. DMV driving school, now a flight school. Um, and that the flight school students would, could be using their pilot license for commercial use?
Well, the, I mean, the. Flight school is a private entity. However, the. If the, the Department of Transportation were to be the governing board, that would be okay.
That's legislation we need to get in place as well as the legislation governing the school, correct?
Right.
Alright. Any more, uh, comments or? Questions from the council? Or any more statements from you, councilmember?
Uh, no, I mean, I'm, I, I mean, I, obviously I'm excited that, that we can bring flight to the city. Uh, even, you know, even in, you know, a, a restricted manner, but, you know. Eventually, you know, we will start opening it up more, you know, to, to more people. And, you know, it'll be an exciting opportunity, you know, the peop- there will be opportunities for people to start business with aircraft. Uh, you know, depending on, you know, your expertise and what you do and what, and whatnot, um. As well as, um, oop, oh, thank you, well. Thank you, Boblin. Um, yeah, so the, the. Yeah, I, you know, I'm, I, like I said, I'm excited for this opportunity to bring this to the city. Um. Uh, again, I want, before we open up the school, I wanna make sure that the rules are firmly established and that the, um, they are. Um, tenable. For, you know, a- and palatable for the authorities within the state.
I agree. Alright, given the new statements and questions, is the, uh, the civilians, do the people have any questions for the councilmember here? So to the podium and state your name.
Hello, sorry. I am Dr. Whitney Blair. I'm Deputy Director at Pillbox. Um, main question is. Will those no-fly zones, restricted areas affect how? We as medical and as PD operate our. Searches for people for rescues? Will that be restricted towards us at all?
No, the, um, th- this will be for, for civilian licensed pilots.
Okay, 'cause as you know, like, we kinda had to fly in those spaces.
The, you know, the emergency services, obviously, obviously, it's different. I mean, you know, you, you may not wanna fly your helicopter over a nu- over a nuclear reactor, for instance. For, you know, a lot of different reasons, but, I mean, hey, you do you, you know, in, in EMS.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure that that didn't come, and, um, for those who are already pilots with our respective organizations. Will they have to go through flight school and get officially certified?
To be a civilian pilot, they will.
Okay, so if they wanna fly on their own during their own time?
Right.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So, what are you doing back there?
You wanna get out of there, sir?
That's my seat.
Can't hear him.
Love affair.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Nile. Uh, just a quick question for the, uh, like, how would you guys like govern, like, uh, like, determine who and who isn't like. A sanctioned pilot to fly over, like, the yellow space?
So. Essentially, they'll have to have completed the flights, uh, the, it's up to the flight school to provide the certification. Um, and.
I meant like from the ground, you gonna like, uh, just like pull over everybody that's in the sky and be like, let me see your license?
Well. Other than. Licensed pilots. Actually, only licensed pilots will be able to take aircraft out of the garage.
Then why do we need the yellow spaces?
Because the, those who are undergoing training. Will, you know, will still need to fly.
Yeah, but wouldn't they have to be with a li- a, like a licensed pilot in order to train?
Yes. Um, but it's still important that they know where they're supposed to fly, uh, because it, it teaches, uh, waypoint navigation. As well as using, uh, you know, visual cues, um, when you're flying.
Yeah, it just seems like to make it like a whole.
Uh, sorry to interrupt, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's a little, it's very tenuous and very hard for, let's say, the instructor to take control of the, the aircraft?
That's correct, a- as, i- in this city, as a, a passenger seat, there is no second stick for the instructor.
Is this where the parachutes come in handy?
In theory?
You just push the trainee out and tell him to pull it?
Alright.
Maybe an ejector seat in that case.
Uh, then there we go into the propellers.
That's a good point. Well, we'll have to.
Uh-oh.
Uh, hello. My name is Tyrone Lincoln. Uh, I'm a taxpayer and a concerned citizen.
Hi, Tyrone.
Hello, I'm, uh, very concerned with this, uh, implementation of, uh. Flying, the invention of flying that we have, we are discussing here today. And that, uh, it, uh, proposes a new threat and perpetuity of. Uh, the engage- uh, ingraciousment of crime in the sky. Uh.
Bethany, you're okay.
My question to you is, when are we going to allocate funds?
I rolled my ankle.
Uh, initiate a National Guard Air Force retaliatory force to protect our skies against po- potential threats from the air.
Need to play jets and we shoot them down.
It's, that's for the governor.
Hey.
Uh, right, so the funds are already allocated to that.
Currently, the state does not have the National Guard.
Okay, yes, but, so you get my point, is what are we gonna do when somebody?
Share would be, it wouldn't be up to us to do that.
Yeah, but sir, but y- you have to understand. You are the people who are implementing and, and, you know, making the decisions here to allow people to fly, okay? And now, you have to understand. And my question to you. What happens when, you know, a good person snaps mid-air and suddenly we, we have a criminal sky pirate going around? You know, let's just say.
That's an awesome title.
Amen!
Going around, you know, let's just say they whip out their three fifty-seven mag, they just start shooting people from the sky, what are we gonna do?
Yeah. Well, they could do the same thing from a car currently.
Right, right, but then, then we have cars to go take them out, you know, so what are we gonna do when they start shooting from the sky?
Then police will execute their own helicopters and chase them, I assume.
Don't they have air one?
So, so, okay, but are the police gonna have a plane?
Man, we don't need like fighter jets over Los Angeles.
Alright, but other people are gonna have planes, right?
You should see what I can do with a helicopter.
Yeah, other people are not gonna have fighter jets either, I mean.
Yeah, uh, there, there will be no jets in this city.
Okay, but what would you say the average speed? Of a, uh, single-prop airplane is compared to a helicopter?
Depending, actually, the helicopters are a lot faster.
Yep.
I rest my case, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Good argument, Tyrone, good argument.
Uh, anyone else? Say crowd control.
About this act?
Yeah, about this specific, uh, not even an act, we're just talking, discussion.
That's just a conversation.
There is no security here, we could've just drank our alcohol in the building.
You get a license, can I buy it, everyone?
You're not drinking?
Alright. I can't hear you, are you talking there, councilmember? No, if not, we'll just move along. Do you have any more, uh, statements? On the flight school? Alright, let's move it along, no problem, thank you. Alright, councilmember?
Is it, is it my turn? What's going on? Oh, okay. Uh, I just have one thing to present today.
Hell, yeah!
You have the floor.
I have the ceiling. Hey, hey, Bethany, you want someone else?
I am, sorry, let's pull this up out of my file.
I have the windows.
I, I am proposing the pair today. Is the People Against Alligator Improper Restraint Act. So, alligators. This law says that alligators, or this act puts forth that alligators will not be allowed in bathtubs. In the city of Los Santos. And the county of San Andreas. With the recent repopulation of cougars, both in the city and outside of the city, further law restrictions on animal treatment must be addressed.
Bethany, passing the flag.
Because of nearby swamps near Zicuto Trail and the possibility of smugglers in the city is important that they be treated with respect and reverence. Therefore, this act motions to ensure that alligators will not be kept in bathtubs or other households. This law further moves to ensure that all wild animals in San Andreas cannot and will not be used as pets. Or kept for personal recreations. Includes wild, local, or exotic species like mountain lions, albatross, sea turtles, sharks, alligators, etc. This includes wild, local, or exotic species like mountain lions, albatross, sea turtles, sharks, alligators, etc.
Counsel, if, if you could just, hold, hold on one moment, could security please determine where the, the music is coming from and, and, um,
Music.
Remove, and remove it?
I, I don't think we have security.
Good job, security.
I don't think, uh, does any, I don't hear music.
Yeah, is it just up, it must be behind you guys, cuz I don't hear anything back here.
Yeah, yeah, I hear it here.
I believe it was.
I needed church to tell me to do that.
They found him and they executed him.
I don't think there's any security here.
Bring it in the world and then take it right back out.
He's dead.
I have his personal belongings.
I appreciate it, thank you. Alright, let's continue. So, okay, can I ask the council a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so you said also, uh, local exotic, uh, animals, all these sorts of, what would happen if I find a feral cat, like a, you know, a cat that's just like three generations down, and I try to, uh, adopt that as a house cat, is it still, I'm not gonna, am I gonna be able to do that?
What species is this? What do you mean?
Oh, my god. Uh, feline, you know, just.
This is a great, this is a great meeting.
Yeah, it's just been out there for a few generations, it doesn't know how to be a house cat anymore.
Well, that is a species that has been, uh, what's the word?
Domesticated.
Domesticated, thank you, father.
You're welcome, son, I love you.
Domesticated? This is not going for that, this is more of a exotic species trade and protection of, uh, important local fauna, like, how, like, uh, mountain lions, etc.
Have, have we seen, I'm sorry to cut in here, have we, have we seen reports of this happening?
So, my great-grandfather once pulled an, an amazing prank, putting an alligator into a bathtub in a bathhouse in the town of Valentine. And it was, it was quite an epic feat, and it was legendary, that you could read about in the history books.
Never heard of it.
Like, if we come to the meeting, do we get free alligators?
We don't have alligators here.
Event.
Let me ask you this question, Mr. Billy. Does an alligator belong in a bathtub?
I mean, it's in the water.
Do you think that putting an alligator in a bathtub could bring danger to people in the city?
So, where do they pass out the free alligators?
No one gets free alligators, sir.
Oh, I want a free alligator.
Do you have to pay for them?
Boo.
Saltwater alligator, don't want that in the bathtub. A lot of outbursts going on.
Like. Are the alligators at the auction?
If you do not stop, we will have you kicked out of the session. Alright, council member, continue on to questions, please. Uh, council member, can, uh, do we have any statistics of how many animals are currently, uh, being illegally poached and taken in as pets?
Where are we?
I don't believe that that is something that is currently an issue. However, I believe that legislation should be used proactively and not necessarily exclusively after something has already occurred and become a problem.
Even mine?
Yeah.
It is our job to identify issues that might arise and fight against them before they become a problem for the people.
While I completely concur that we need to stay ahead of a lot of the things that are happening in the city, um, I do have a question, um, one is, you state in the section two, purposes and findings, um, uh, this include all wild, local, and exotic species such as mountain lions, albatross, sea, sea turtles, sharks, alligators, etc. What do you mean by etc? And it needs to be explicitly written, written what animal species you're talking about.
Alright, yeah, well, I'll just say non-domesticated animals, that's much easier.
What about snakes, I own two of those.
Uh, he needs to immediately be removed from the bathtub for his and the public's safety.
I mean, it's in a, it's like, you know, clariom is not.
What if it's?
And have you, um, have you talked to a zoologist or?
I have a zoology degree, sir.
Uh, the ra- well, that's fine, have you talked to any outside zoologists?
Why would I need to do that?
For further input, and have you talked to the rangers? Yeah, I was always gonna say, have you spoken to the rangers about this?
Uh, no, but I believe that we have a ranger here, and I think that this isn't something that really needs to be discussed with them, since this is just implementing safety for.
I believe we should empower the rangers.
Well, there needs to be, uh, currently, what's on the books for laws against, uh, harming animals and domesticating wild animals?
Not this.
Not thinking.
Just the animal cruelty law, right, so that needs to be expanded, which in which you would want to get judicial review, you would want to get inputs from the police, you would want to get inputs from local experts on wildlife. I could say we're working with the ranger's office on formulating some new laws. Yeah. Cuz even if we were to enact this, there's no teeth in order to actually put it in play.
Hey, Tommy, you think they'd have the same.
Yeah, you'd think.
You'd think so, huh?
And I would concur, I would concur that you reach out to those, those different governing bodies to figure out what judiciously, what needs to happen, and then, um, through the laws that are stated in the statutes, what are you gonna do in order to apply this bill into law? Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay.
Um, while I am, you know, all for not domesticating wild animals, we need to, I think there needs to be some more, um, verbiage, especially to the description and/or the authorization, who's gonna be governing this and who decides what this is?
I mean to be rude, buddy, but I'm really trying to listen to this as a ranger.
And I think it would be the police and the rangers that are making sure that if someone does this, they be held responsible.
Yeah, we're just, well, technically, you decided, right, we're just looking at the bill.
I, I'm saying that we would decide.
Yes. Um, so, I would vote to a motion to table this, given we need further input on this.
From who?
Uh, the rangers is one, judicially, too, and I would like to see what, what applicable situations would this bill be helping?
I see, alright.
Currently, I'm not aware of, and this is just me, and like I said, this is why I want outside of opinions on this. One, the list, I need to verify that these animals even exist, um, in its current state. And then which would be against domesticating, cuz like the council member said, he has a snake, technically, you can't domesticate. A snake wouldn't be considered domesticated, but you can't keep it in a cage or keep it in a, uh, aquarium.
I, I would say snakes. I, I would say snakes have been considered domesticated, certainly. For sure.
That point just goes down to a species thing.
Yeah, snakes have certainly been domesticated, sir.
Isn't aquarium a bathtub?
An aquarium is not a bathtub.
Can it be?
Uh.
Cause it's in a glass, right?
We're gonna have to legally define bathtub.
Exactly, yep, that's true.
Okay, patrolling.
That's a good point, that's a good point.
Or so.
Yeah, so what I would say, uh, council member, and I'm not a.
Gonna have a copper bathtub.
Is this bill needs to be written out a little bit more, um, and like the council member just explained definitions and all of that stuff, who's gonna be governing this and all of that. I do like the idea, I think that this needs to happen, but I just, like I said, I wouldn't feel proper voting on this yet without the inputs of those other governing bodies and some more, uh, literature written about this, not literature, but the bill expressed, uh, clearly on its definitions and punishments. Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, chance, yeah.
That we should still open up the floor and allow, uh, members of the public speak on this matter? Oh, one hundred percent, one hundred percent, I just don't feel like it's ready to be voted on. On that note, if you want, we can open up to the council members and then to the public if you like, I mean, we've kind of already been asking questions, but let's officially do it. Any questions on the council? No, alright, zoom to the public, land up here on the podium, state your name.
Robert Banner. Okay, uh, my question is, this wouldn't in any way hinder me if these, um, exotic animals came up on my property from shooting them in the face and taking their pelts, would it?
I, I don't think this has anything to do with that.
Okay, because that's what will be hap-
Yeah, you can't.
Alright, as long as I can shoot them in the face, I'm good.
No, you cannot shoot them when they're in the bathtub.
No, I'm gonna shoot them in the face when they're on my property.
Alligators in the bathtub, it doesn't say anything about mountain lions.
So, I, I was just wondering, like, when we're getting these, like, free alligators?
That's not true, cats actually love water, I have a zoology degree.
Well, apparently, they're out in the pub, they're out in the wild right now, so you can go get them out there.
I, but I thought, like, you guys were distributing alligators after the meeting.
I'm sorry, there's no free alligator.
Check your local sewer.
Check your local sewer.
Look for turtles down there, too.
I thought, that, I found turtles down there, no alligators, though.
Hey, look harder.
Well, can you, like, trap one for me and then, like, give it to me, like?
Go to, go check Vice City.
You guys are supposed to be a, what?
Go to Vice City.
So, we're getting free, we got free plane tickets to Vice City, then?
No.
No.
What kind, what kind of city ca- why am I voting for you guys?
We don't give away free things, sir, we don't give away free things.
So, the, why am I voting for you guys?
Great question.
Good question.
Did you vote for free things, I don't know?
Did you vote?
Yeah, of course I voted.
What'd you vote for?
The city does not give the people the right to free alligators yet, sir.
I, I voted for Boblin.
Okay, Boblin, he voted for you, make something happen. Did you offer him free alligators, Boblin?
Do you want free alligators, sir?
Yeah, Bo- Boblin said there was, there was a promise of free alligators.
I never said that.
You promised him free alligators, Boblin, that, that, that is not at the highest level.
Relation, relation.
The council about the council's statements?
It, come on, you honestly think an upstanding citizen of the, you know, the, the city would lie about free alligators?
I have a council member that's sworn in, saying that you, that you're, that you, he didn't say.
Yeah, they swore me in before taking the podium, come on.
I have a council member, Boblin, brother.
The penal slur.
He was sworn in, are you saying this sworn-in council member is lying about you lying?
Oh, absolutely.
I trust the council members' word.
I definitely, well, first of all, I know that's not true, cuz I didn't even try to get elected last, last election, I didn't even mention to anyone I was running. So, that's completely false, sir, I apologize.
I told everybody to vote for you, Boblin.
Thank you, Jason, yeah.
I thought your position said a vote for you is a vote for tractors.
I wasn't even here that week.
Where are the tractors?
Well, somebody promised me free alligators, and I, I'm very, I'm very.
Figuring out who that was is very important, so you go out here throwing around somebody promising you free alligators, that's very harmful.
Go call Jack Powitzer.
What?
Any, any more, sorry, any more questions, sir?
No, no, that's, that's, if we're not getting free alligators, I'm good.
I want free alligators, buddy.
Hi, I'm Niall.
Hi, Niall.
I have a question, I wanted to, uh, uh, top one, like, with, uh, what Mr. Banner said and then what Boblin said about the, uh, the hunting and the poaching. Uh, you said illegal poaching, technically, there are no clear laws in place that prevent poaching.
I never said anything about illegal poaching.
I could say those are being worked on. He said animal cruelty.
And maybe he, he brought up poaching earlier in his statement.
I did not. I personally did not bring up poaching, sir.
He did.
I definitely did not.
It's being recorded.
Yes, and you can watch it back later and see that I definitely did not say that.
If you did say it, then you wanna owe me a grand?
Owe you a grand?
Yeah.
I'll give you a thousand dollars, yes.
You owe all of us a thousand.
Alright, I'm fine with that.
Alright, man, he looks like he changed his outfits, come back up here again.
Um, my question is in regards to the Tyrone Lincoln?
Oh, he's the same guy.
Yeah, my question is in regards to the animals, uh, will we be able to, uh, purchase and own and use tigers for self-defense?
The whole point is so that you can't do that, sir.
Oh.
Yeah, that, that.
So, if we see tigers, if we see tigers in the public and somebody is doing that, we have a right to shoot them?
No, but you should report it to the police immediately.
Okay, why, why do we not have a right to shoot them?
I don't think anywhere in the United States you have a right to shoot someone cuz they have a pet tiger.
No, no, not the person, the, the animal.
Oh. Well, I, 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 you know, I don't know the legislation on that, but I bet if a tiger is attacking you, you have a right to s- to protect yourself as a God-given citizen of the United States of America.
And somebody cannot legally own one, so therefore, any tiger that is spotted or any sort of creature of that manner, such as a, a dog or a cat, may also be executed on sight, is that correct?
Dogs and cats are legally purchasable, that's completely unrelated, second of all.
Get something clear, the council is not condoning killing or executing anything.
Yes, and that was never even mentioned in this bill.
Okay, but, uh, it's, it's, you know, hypothetical, I'm trying to get to the bottom of.
This whole bill was about trying to make life better for animals.
Well, yes, but you're out here saying.
It'll be better, in my stomach.
You're out here saying that, you know, so is the point to, to support wild animals or to not?
The, the point is to keep people from owning pets of exotic animals in wildlife.
And so, the, the, conversely, right, the opposite of that, that we're looking at, uh, is that we, we should be able to shoot and kill these animals if they're not protected.
That's a completely different thing that has nothing to do with this.
Exactly, this doesn't fall under the purview of what, uh, council member Boblin is presenting in his bill.
That would have to be a different bill, thank you, I love alligators. This, that would be a different bill that I would pass, it would say, we should shoot all exotic animals that are on the loose, which I'm not passing that.
I think, I think what you're doing is, is you're actually removing.
Go check.
Protections for these re- uh, these, uh, animals.
What?
No, he's adding protections, in order to not allow humans to gain these, let's just say, wild animals inside confined tubs or any other medium of.
But if they are doing that, then the animals are protected.
The animals will be confiscated and released back to the wild, yes.
Where people can kill them.
If they chose to illegally do so, yes, and then those people would be arrested.
What makes it illegal?
That, you see, there are no laws.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna an- answer us, Banner. They're, they're scared of questions.
The, the rangers will come upon you like a wasp eye if you shoot an animal in the wild, sir, without the proper.
If I don't consent, aye.
But I don't know about that, I've shot a lot of animals, I ain't ever seen a ranger, so.
Sir, sir, have you, have you ever had your, uh, like, uh, pass revoked from a zoo, ever?
I've never been to a zoo.
So, you've never been to a place where they have caged animals and you haven't walked in there and shot those animals in that cage?
I've never done that, no.
You sure?
Yes.
Could sound a little like it, a little bit.
Oh, no, I would ne- I've never been to a zoo.
So, you wouldn't shoot a caged animal?
No, ob- obviously not, because it's in human captivity.
Okay, so if it's captive, so if that tiger.
So, you're saying that animals that are not captive have less rights than animals that are captive?
That is my point, yes.
Yeah, alright, I understand, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We need, we need some question screening, I think. Uh.
Robert Banner. Okay, so, uh, you were stating about, um, not being able.
Speak up a little bit, sorry.
Sorry, sorry. Robert Banner, you were saying again about not being able to, to, to allow to kill a wild animal. And, I, I'm sorry, I don't care where I'm at, if there is a cougar or alligator aggressively maneuvering at me, I'm gonna shoot it in the face.
That is completely different than what that man said, sir. That, sir.
I will sh- I will shoot any cougar in the face that is making moves.
You have the right as an American to defend yourself against any animal.
Yeah.
If this man back there was mentioning that he wanted to go out and just murder animals for recreational use, it's completely different if you are.
He never stated that, he stated that he would murder animals to protect us.
I, I moved the table, I moved the table, this discussion.
I, I second that motion with this last statement being, we are not talking about private property, we are not talking about protection yourself against a wild animal that is attacking you, this is not what this bill is about, this bill is not about, uh, hunting or trapping or anything like that, that is a separate issue. This bill is very specific on what it's trying to achieve.
That helps.
And we're gonna table this till, discussion till next week, because, one, the bill isn't complete, two, these things haven't been flushed out, and three, we re- you guys really need, and I mean you guys, as in some of the, the public in listening to this discussion, is, this bill is very specific on what its goal is, and that's the, that specific issue is what we're dealing with here. Uh, but I wanna move this meeting along, cuz we're already.
Hey, goo- good talk, bro.
Yeah, do we, do we have a ranger, is there a ranger in the audience?
There's a ranger right here.
Alright, perfect, perfect.
Uh, less of a question, more of a statement.
I think we should be able to hunt rangers.
For the LSPD, I'm also Assistant Lead Ranger, um, in the, uh, state parks of San Andreas. Um, there is a penal code being established right now specifically for nature, wildlife, hunting, poaching. Um, there is a penal code being established right now specifically for nature, wildlife, hunting, poaching, illegal, uh, hunting and fishing. Um, so, uh.
What about ownership?
Again, everything is being established at the moment. The rangers are in discussion with the Attorney General's Office. That's gonna be discussed with the, uh, Chief Justice. Um, we are establishing a penal code. Um, what I would suggest is that if you do come across any, uh, exotic, uh, animals that you, unless you are defending yourself, you don't seek out a, uh, a means of harming them. Um, if there is a, an exotic animal and you don't know what to do, report it to the PD and they'll get a ranger up there to deal with it.
Yes, that is exactly the sentiment that we said. Thank you very much, sir.
I appreciate it, Ranger.
There is gonna be a penal code for it.
Alright, perfect.
Uh, I appreciate you coming up and telling us, Ranger.
Hey, how you doing? I just got a quick question for you.
Yeah, can you speak up?
Yeah. Hey, uh, hi, my name is John Bender. I just wanna know are there currently any laws against hunting these animals?
That's not what this law is about.
No, wait, what's the law about?
The law is about not being able to own these animals and use them as a pet.
So what you're saying is we can currently hunt them as we wish?
By using them as food.
Within the confines of the, uh, the laws, sure.
Oh, could you, could you clarify? Could you please clarify?
That's required. I'm not even sure that we have a distributor for hunting rifles right now.
Alright, so what you're saying is if I were to take my handgun, I can go hunt them if I wish. Uh, we're not here to tell you what the laws are in this, uh, city. You're gonna probably have to reach out to law enforcement, get more clarity on that.
Can we reiterate what the ranger said, which was, if you see a wildlife, please report to PD and not harm them?
Okay, 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 good to know, good to know.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Brian Davis, um, this, this.
Uh, try it again.
My name is Brian Davis. Does this law, does this law have anything to do with?
Was it like lion or something?
Will this, will this prevent individuals from having sexual relations with exotic animals?
I'm gonna tell you.
Alright, alright, get out of here.
Please say that, that is.
I, I would not recommend you have sex with a cougar, sir, unless it's a female woman.
But it doesn't prevent it exclusively?
On your questioning right now, I'm gonna censor you in your question right now. It is uncalled for, and this is not the place for this.
I, I feel like it is, but okay.
Well, I don't.
Please don't fuck animals. Please don't fuck animals.
The, the council would like to officially make a statement. Please do not fuck animals.
I can't believe this has to even be, even had to say that.
Yeah, I'm surprised this was brought up.
Welcome to Los Santos.
See what happens, Boblin?
Fully supported to fuck animals. I just want to apologize to the council for even bringing this up. This is a complete debacle.
No, 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 do not, do not, this bill is, I, I agree with it, but, uh, it's not your fault.
It is. I blame him.
Alright, it is, alright.
I blame myself. I take responsibility for this.
Alright, so moving along, I, I don't want that last statement to ring loud anymore. Uh, moving along, do you have any more?
I think it's a good one.
Oh my god.
Good way to end the note.
Do not fuck animals.
I, I second the motion to not fuck animals.
Yeah, I, I third that. I third that.
Can we get a third? Can we get a third? Alright, thank you.
Alright, the motion.
Sorry, I think we need more research on this. Sorry, we need more.
Wait, whoa, 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 we need to, we need to define if a human is an animal?
I think, yeah, that's, uh, we're mammals.
We need, I, can we table this until we define it more specifically, please?
Jesus Christ.
Mammals are animals, but I would like to table this discussion.
I'd like to table this before we define what an animal is, sir.
Yes, let's move on. Mr. Caputo. No, I'm definitely done. Definitely done. Alright, moving along.
Um, hey, guys, I don't, I don't have any bills to, uh, propose, uh, today.
Thank you.
I only proposed one today.
Doctor.
I'd like to, I'd like to thank Mr. Winters for being here, even though he's doing it for us.
I don't, I don't feel good at all.
Sticking through this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters.
I'm gonna die in a second now. I love you guys.
Don't say that, councilmember.
Oh, there'll be another seat up for election.
Did, did that pomegranate help at all?
It's why I sit next to Dr. Cat, you know, if things ever go down, she's like right there.
That's true, that's true. Um, on that note, Mr. Winters, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything. I'm good.
Alright, how about you, uh, Dr. Cat?
I don't have anything this week.
Alright, alright. So, with that, I'll open the floor to any questions regarding the council, the city, or any concerns the public has. Please come to the podium.
As well as the, uh, proposals of sanctioned, um, note things that I forget the name of currently.
Uh, say again?
The sanctioned, sanctioned, uh, what are they called? Sanctions?
Sanctioned sanctions?
No, that, like, you propose something to council about bringing something to the city or making a change.
My petitions.
Yeah, 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 sanction petitions, that's it. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Are there any petitions up to the, uh?
As well as petitions to present for the council to sanction since we passed that.
Alright, so the floor is open to the public. If you have any statements that aren't regarding to animal and fornicating, uh, please come.
No, no animal hostess, please.
I know.
If you would like to talk about animal sex, please approach the podium.
No, no, don't oppose the petition about that. I don't wanna hear about that.
I would like to know who set Burger Shot on fire about two hours ago.
It was a cougar.
Really?
Allegedly.
Allegedly.
I would. Got it, so they all.
I.
Jason, I wish we could tell you.
Jason, I need to have talk with you for a session after this.
I wish we could tell you.
About cougars and Burger Shot?
Why or how, but I just know that it was set on fire while we were at Sandy.
Uh, come to the podium. We can't hear you very well.
She was saying that she knows that it was set on fire.
I know, I know it was set on fire, but we were like, we were like Roxy could even attest. Gilbert and I were just at Sandy and Roxy's like, there's a fire call behind us and I go around the corner and you see Burger Shot and smoke.
Actually, we, we need to talk later about insurance.
Uh, no, Kelsey, was any casualties in that?
No casualties.
No casualties, okay.
Alright, that's good to hear. Alright, any, uh, any other concerns, questions, statements? Oh, I've already made my statement. Don't fuck animals, please. Oh my god.
Please, no.
Alright. Alright, on that note, any, any, any?
No more animal dealing.
From the council members excluding Caputo's last statement.
Auctions, auctions after this, yeah.
I love America.
Alright, alright, so given that there are questions, we're gonna adjourn this meeting. There are auctions afterwards, so those that are interested, stick around for the auction.
Are they, are they here?
They're auctioning off a cougar to fuck it.
Are the, are the auctions here or are they somewhere else?
I'm, uh, can, hey, Caputo, I need to hold up a sign saying you're a cougar, so I can auction you off.
I didn't hear you, sorry, I'm, I'm old.
Julie.
I'm just saying the auctions will be in this.
I have a good one, Jason. Feel better?
I literally feel like I lost brain cells.
Yeah. Alright, uh. I feel like I didn't need a government body to tell me not that sexy of an animal.
I, I couldn't even know if he would have the audacity to even ask.
Occupation down over there. I'll, I'll put up detail for just a second.
I, I, I can't fathom it.
Well, I think given that.
Yeah, apartments, sorry, tall apartments, five.
Given that you started in the mayor's chair during the meeting, I don't think we could have really expected a, an actual.
Yeah, that's fine.
Educated question.